All right. Okay, tonight is Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. This is the committee of the whole meeting for District 96. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhold?
Here.
Mr. Muhrhead?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
And a floor, Ms. President.
All right, our first item on the agenda is welcome to Blight Park School by Principal Kazimir Dorman.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for joining us at Blight. Welcome to our construction site. It's very exciting. A lot of students have been asking a lot of questions the last couple of days about what's going on and what are the containers there for and what's all that noise that's happening. So it's been exciting and fun for them, but we're just excited to see the end result. In addition to that, this is just an exciting time of the year. Right before spring break, we had our One School, One Book event. We have not been able to do that event in person since 2019. We actually shut down the day after our One School, One Book event was scheduled in 2020, so we weren't able to do that. This year, we read the book Wish Tree. It's just a beautiful novel about friendship and tolerance and acceptance, and it's told through the voice of an old oak tree. And we actually created our own wish tree. If you go down to the main entrance, and all of the students' individual personal wishes are hanging from that tree. So it's just a really sweet symbol of it, and the students see it every day as they enter the school. Throughout April, we are looking forward to all our spring activities starting. So garden club just started this week. In a couple of weeks, we're going to start our Cardio Kids program, so the students will start running again. It's just, we'll be doing a lot of work in the back with our sensory garden and our prairie garden, and that is with the garden club, but that's with all students as well as they all help to tend those areas of our school. So it's just a busy time, and we're just, once again, happy to see you here and joining us, even though that we are in the middle of construction. And on that note, I am going to hand it back over to you. Thanks.
Thanks. Great to be here. I've been a part of reading the Wish Tree book, too.
Did you like it?
You know, the kids were a little uncertain at first. It kind of started slow, but then they kicked in in high gear.
Yeah, because we had the last families that called at the end, and like, their email, and said they were like in tears at the end. It was just sweet.
It's a great book. I got to see the tree. I didn't know about that. All right, next, that brings us to public comment. Is there any public comment?
There is not.
All right. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. And next, are there board member comments? I guess I should have saved my talk about the Wish Tree for now. How'd everybody spend their spring break? Any good trips?
Went to Mexico, and it took me three days to get home. So that's a story for another time.
Oh, yeah.
Wow.
I went to New York, and it took me, we were supposed to come back Friday night, and we didn't get back till Sunday at like midnight because of the storms Friday.
Oh, wow, yeah, I guess so, I guess so.
The storm triggered a delay, which triggered the pilots being over their time, which canceled my flight, which delayed me for my connection, which just...
Wow.
If you name it, it happened. It was like a bad comedy.
The food was bad, too, I bet.
Um, most of it, yeah. Bunch of fast food and everything on that one, but we made it. We're back.
Okay, all right. Well, hopefully you were at like a beach or something?
Yeah, so for the first five days, it was great.
All right.
And then kind of went south from there. Yeah, it was warm, it was sunny. It was good to kind of be away for a little bit, so was feeling refreshed, and then we went through three days of emotions.
Travel can be stressful, definitely.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, that was rough.
Yeah, it's one to remember.
All right, well, Stephanie, how about you? Do you just, you enjoy, were you able to enjoy your travel delay?
Well, yes, yeah, we became basically New Yorkers. We moved to Brooklyn for two days, thanks to some friends who have Airbnbs out there. So we just fully embraced life in Bushwick specifically, in Brooklyn. But it was, it was a really nice age to take the kids, you know, Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island, et cetera. So they've learnt, I mean, this last year in fifth grade, my daughter had learnt about, you know, 9/11, et cetera. So it was, you know, it was nice to be able to share that moment with them also, but be able to use it as educational, but also, you know, enjoying ourselves in New York.
They don't let you climb up the statue anymore?
Yeah, you can go up to the crown, but it's, they book out in advance, so like, they were fully sold out. We went in the pedestal, but the crown, you can go back in it.
Yeah, cool.
So they were a really great age for it.
All right, good. Can you do like a good, like, "I'm walking here, I'm walking here"?
I mean, we clocked, I mean, we clocked about seven to eight miles a day, so the kids really kept up.
Oh, wow.
We just did the subway. I mean, you know, being from Chicago, it didn't feel that overwhelming, you know? It was pretty doable. We won a Broadway lottery tickets.
Oh, really?
I took it like every day, so.
Awesome.
Won the Harry Potter one.
Oh, nice.
So three and a half hours, but it was a matinee, so it was really nice. Yeah, it was a great trip.
All right, cool.
I hope others got a chance to enjoy, and of course, our educators and staff and leaders some much deserved time off.
Absolutely, absolutely. Lynda, you wish to inform everybody about your family members?
No, I do not wish to inform everybody, no. I think we should probably get back to the agenda, though, since we have people in the audience.
We do, yes. All right. So that brings us to committee reports. First off is facilities.
Well, the big thing that we're talking about, or we had a brief meeting last week. A lot of it was discussing the feedback from planning and zoning for the next conversation that we're having here, and then also, and the agenda's in the board book, and we really didn't discuss too much on the future considerations, just because there was a lot of discussion on this plan that's in front of us. This is the refined plan. After presenting to, sorry, my thoughts are entirely disorganized at this very moment. DLA and WT Engineering and the district brought the proposed plan at Central and Hauser in front of planning and zoning. Ultimately, there was a fair amount of public comment, concerns regarding various elements of the design. Legitimate, you know, a lot of it was perception and perspectives on change, and just thoughts on how this design did or did not fit within what people expected and/or thought would fit within kind of how they see Riverside to be. But ultimately, the fact that we presented in front of planning and zoning in January and had a lot of very substantive feedback there and incorporated that, and had had a good conversation with planning and zoning, led them to approve all four of our variances, which were items regarding parking, fences, I forgot the other two, but Ryan will remind me in a moment here.
Trash enclosure?
Trash enclosure, honestly, the trash enclosure is probably the least important, and it is an essential element of planning and zoning, but that was not what people were keying in on. Major success, I think, of the presentation of planning and zoning this time around was the, all the landscaping that we'll be installing, and noting that this is landscaping that is intended to provide bright colors and an element throughout the various seasons. You can see some pictures of various landscape items in your board book, colors that happen spring, summer, and fall, and then in winter, you have other items of visual interest. But this screening and color helped a lot of people believe that this is not just a giant concrete parking lot that will interrupt the view shed. We will shortly, so with those variances, this lets us move forward with the plan. The next discussion in front of us is going to be the natural grass versus the artificial turf.
We're intending to have that discussion here in the agenda, I believe? So I should mention, I guess there was a...
I'm not sure about when exactly you wanted to add that discussion, have that discussion here.
I think now works, right?
DLA is here to help answer questions and perhaps provide some better context than I've already provided.
So there was a proposal before, before we got started here of, we've definitely talked a lot about this up to date, and definitely want to continue to hear everybody's thoughts. I don't know about you, my opinions have been going back and forth repeatedly, but that said, wondering if folks can be mindful of our audience and our time as we're discussing, if that makes sense? Is anybody okay with that?
Yes, and sorry, like I said, my thoughts aren't entirely organized well enough, but...
Hey, Joel, can you speak a little louder with that? I can't hear you very well.
I apologize.
Yeah, no worries.
Not used to talking loud. We need to provide guidance today to DLA and WT ultimately about what our preference is with regards to a field, because that significant, that choice impacts the ultimate design that is provided to a contractor. So that has both impacts to, for obvious reasons, what the contractor will be installing, as well as some impacts to us, the board, in terms of what we will spend now for this plan and in the future. Future is maintenance, now is the first cost to install the field. Ultimately, the planning and zoning discussion, if I didn't say it clearly enough already, it went very well. Planning and zoning was, that was a unanimous vote, and like I said, having, DLA was there to present and answer questions and lead to a level of comfort of what we were looking at and planning on.
It's good that the vote went well. It was definitely a lot of back and forth discussion at that meeting, from my understanding. Thanks to you, Joel, and Wes, you were there as well.
Wesley was there also to provide some commentary from the board. I for, to avoid perception of conflict of interest, needed to recuse myself from the planning and zoning discussion, and also, I really shouldn't be speaking on, from a school perspective at that either.
Makes sense. Well, what should we say? We definitely had a lot of feedback from the community on this, even just in the last few days. I know there was one item that came up, there was a discussion or proposal about a wall or substituting a wall for the fence.
That was a substitute for the fence around the playground?
Yes.
So at the planning and zoning in January, at least one of the planning and zoning members had noted that they really didn't have a lot of input on that, because it was, that fence is set far enough back into our property that it's not considered part of the street yard. And a large part of planning and zoning's concerns or purview is, in Riverside, the street yard is considered rather sanctr- sanct, which means you don't put things in it without a lot of thought, and that's part of the reason we don't have any fences in front yards. So typically, in your usual residential front yard. So that's why this fence around the playfield had to have a variance, because now we're, we talked about this at the last meeting that was at Hollywood. It's, it's a safety issue. But to help fit within the general atmosphere of the village, it's a four-foot tall fence, and it's wrought iron, and it's got a more decorative feel to it than chain link.
With, I think, additional cost for that upgrade as well. I forget how much the difference was, but it was notable.
I want to say $40,000, but basically, your ornamental fence will cost somewhere in the area of, I'm looking for Ryan only to shake his head yes or no, say $60 or $70 a foot, whereas chain link is probably more like $30 a foot. And that's foot of length, so don't quote me on that, because I'm going off memory.
Close enough.
Well, so, and I think the idea here is that we're definitely trying to be good neighbors and trying to follow through with the spirit of Riverside, and yes, the norm might not be fences, but we're trying to make our fences a little bit more visually pleasing than a typical chain link fence.
Yes, and in this case, the fence, actually, if you look at page six of your board book, the fence is set back 11 feet from the sidewalk along Aitkinside.
Sorry, Joel, which attachment are you referring to?
I have the whole thing as a PDF, so it's immediately after the letter from Ryan to us talking about schedule. It's called the Final Schematic Design Site Plan.
I think we have a different, I think Kathy broke this out.
I think we have a different page number?
It looks like this. It's what's in front of us.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And DLA is here as well to answer questions, Dan.
So I feel like maybe we should just get on with the conversation that, you know, pending?
Well, let's see, so we, I didn't know how much in depth we wanted to get into in regards to that wall proposal and/or what was it? No? And then when the other was the, the idea of bollards, I think was brought up?
Is that something we're needed to discuss right now?
Those aren't in our, those aren't in our plan.
Right.
Those are things, those are comments that came from community members.
Correct.
So that's up to the board, obviously.
Dan, and Ryan, I'll summarize very briefly, and then perhaps point to Ryan, give him a little bit more, he can give a little bit more detail, but basically, there was an ask or request comment from, through the village, that perhaps the fence along Aitkinside should be even more secure than just a wrought iron fence, and by more secure meant to have some kind of bollards in front of it to prevent vehicle intrusion. And that is a concern born out of the fact that a vehicle could potentially drive into the field when kids are there. So bollards are an option. Ryan noted that there's a strength, super strengthened fence that's just, it's meant to address that same issue, but in probably a more aesthetic version.
Can I ask a question? Can you talk about the use of bollards in the village now? Like, where do they, I'm trying to think of where they exist and what they look like.
The easiest place to imagine where this is, is there was an accident many years ago in Robinson Park, and a vehicle did intrude into a field, and it...
Was that Harrington?
Sorry, Harrington.
Oh, Harrington.
Harrington, thank you. And I misquoted Wesley, I'm sorry. Three children were killed, and this was about 30 years ago, and so in response, the village moved the, moved the field from having the backstop closer to the road to, more towards the interior, and they installed a bunch of wooden eight-by-eight vertical posts to possibly address that issue.
Gotcha. I just don't go there very often, okay.
I guess Robinson Court, if I'm thinking correctly, that's right off of Harlem, though.
Yes, yeah. No, I know what you're talking, thank you. I just don't go to that park very much.
I don't think those wood things are intended to stop a vehicle, though, are they? I just assumed they were just preventative from people driving onto the field, not to actually stop anything.
They are intend, they...
They're just going to snap off.
Basically, from what, and I have never, I am not an expert in these, they would slow a vehicle down, but the wood does not typically...
You would need those posts, we were, well, certain engineering requires those at like entrances of buildings and stuff like that, so that vehicles can't drive through buildings, but I don't see any need to discuss it further, in my opinion, on either one of those. I'm not interested in pursuing either one. I have my reasons for it, and I can go through them, but I'm not interested in getting into a big debate about it.
I don't, I don't think that needs to be board-level discussion. I think we can look at costs, and if we really want the traffic engineer to give some thoughts on it, we could ask DLA to ask them about that. Yeah, I don't, I don't see a need to discuss it that much either.
Okay.
The other element you mentioned, Dan, was the wall around the play area, that's the pink on the screen.
The only thing that intrigued me a little bit was that, is it usable play space? Obviously, it'd have to be supervised.
Yeah.
But I don't, yeah, obviously, that's...
That's the opposite of what we're going for?
Yeah, yeah, well, maybe, maybe. I mean, if it's an opportunity to give them a different climbing experience, maybe, but yeah, again, that's a whole discussion with how that space is used.
But our whole argument for the fence was to keep them from going there, and if you're encouraging them to climb on it...
No, I don't, there's a specific kind of climbing, you know, a climbing for exercise type wall, one that's meant, there are ways to do it where they won't...
Kids didn't tell me they wanted a rock wall.
Yeah, where they won't, ones that prevent them from scaling the wall entirely. It's meant for recreation.
You can do short, concrete, brick things that let kids climb, and, you know, again, that's more of a design detail. I don't know that that's board-level discussion.
Yeah, it was the only thing that I was like, oh, well, that could be cool.
It could be, and it doesn't need to be decided right now. There's, there's time to swap that out in a set of plans.
Okay.
The real discussion for purposes of scheduling, so that DLA can continue to advance the plans so that we can go to bid, is having direction on what the field needs to be.
So are we starting that conversation now?
Yep.
Sounds that way.
I believe we should.
Yeah, great. Does anybody want to start? I'm happy to start.
Go for it.
Yeah. This is a topic that I have wavered a lot over the last, I feel like we've been talking about this for years now, years, and I've ended up at a position where I didn't think I was going to end up, so I'm a little, you know, shocked at my own, where I'm at. I clearly, you know, my family's a sporting family. We have played on turf for years. I'm not opposed to turf in any way. I think that the RB field is a great value, a great asset to our community that is used all the time. So originally, I thought I was going to be really leaning towards turf, and after thinking about it a lot, I really think I am leaning towards the natural grass route. I think the field we have back there right now is just, there's nothing, we've done nothing to it. So for me, I think the first step, and I know it's hard to say we're going to spend money and then reassess in 10 years, but I think that's the step we should go in. I think we should, you know, invest in a very usable natural surface. I understand that the usability percentage is going to go down because of that, but I do think, for me, it's that, that feels like the right direction for me in our town. I think this is a project that, I mean, I've been on the board for eight years. We've been talking about doing something in the back of Central prior to my tenure. I'm concerned that if we do go a turf route, we're going to stall this process, possibly. So that's another nagging thing in my head. So for me, I really want to get this project done. I really think that we need to live within, you know, the culture and climate of our community. I'm not opposed to turf. I would be willing, if I, if I were on the board in 10 years, I'd be willing to have that conversation. I will not be. But yeah, so I just wanted to start out, I'm leaning toward, for me, I think the direction I would like to go is natural grass. Anybody else want to chime in?
So you mentioned in terms of that might stall the process?
I'm a little concerned that if we try to go the turf route, I think there'll be some pushback from community members, possibly, or, or, I don't know how that village process works. I think there could be pushback from the village in a way, and I just, right now, I just want to get this project done, because I think it is a huge value add, what we have planned here. Like I said, I've been on the board since my youngest was in third grade. He is now a junior in high school, and I really want the kids that go to Central and Hauser to have an outdoor play space that is, that is useful, and I'm, I just am worried about forestalling that any, any, any longer. I want this to get done, and I think a really well-designed natural grass surface is going to achieve that. I think there's always, we know how this works, there's always iterations. If we do this, and in 10 years, it's like, you know what? We're just not being able to use this as much as we wanted, then we can have that discussion later. I know, speaking from like a, you know, resource, resource perspective, you don't really want to do that, but I, I just, that's where I'm at, anyway. That's how I feel, that's where my gut is lying. Two years ago, I would have said I would vote for turf immediately, so I'm a little shocked at myself, but I, I feel pretty comfortable with that, that's my feeling on the direction, but would love to hear other people's comments.
Well, Lynda, to your point, yes, actually, the discussion on the field surface and its effect on pervious and impervious areas could have an impact, because this plan still has to go in front of planning and zoning for their site review. So the variations are approved, but they will still have a discussion with us, sorry, they being planning and zoning, will have a discussion with us on surface treatments and how we're addressing water, and certainly, if you look at some of those drawings that were provided, the, there's a significant, there is a significantly greater need for pervious pavers in the parking lot if we use the artificial turf. That area approximately doubles, so. And one thing that, speaking from experience on planning and zoning, is that dealing with water and pervious areas and making sure we've got the right absorption is, it's a goal of the village to reduce the amount of runoff in the world, so.
I'm happy to chime in. Lynda, I felt very similar to you. Yes, I think we have all given it a lot more thought than I probably, than I would ever be thinking about turf versus natural grass in my life, and a lot of research and listening in on, on some of the meetings happening at the, at the village level with planning and zoning, but obviously, like, the number one priority is really the usability, and of course, either option is going to give us like 90% more usability, probably, than we're getting now. And yes, I know that turf would ultimately give us 100% usability, but I'm willing to concede the, you know, what I understand the difference to be maybe, I don't know, 15, 10% difference or so between natural grass. It's not enough for me to offset to say turf, because I think it's still almost equally as usable to go with natural grass. I know that there's, there's a maintenance cost, but even just based on some of our various 10-year, like fiscal projections, I think it's a, it's an annual maintenance cost that we're able to sustain. Obviously, there's a higher cost upfront with turf, and then you still need the replacement of it, so I think over the life of turf, it winds up being more expensive than the natural grass despite the, the maintenance. And I really did appreciate, I think, the, Joel, thank you also for facilitating a lot of this. The site visits really helped me better understand like the true nature and the usability and what, what the true needs for us are, right? These aren't like high-impact fields, high school level, collegiate level, like athletes out there, so I felt really comfortable with what it's being used for, and seeing examples in our nearby surrounding communities that have been successful with well-drained natural grass. And then I think I really appreciated, you know, I'm not a Riverside resident, I reside in Brookfield, I obviously have children that go to schools in Riverside, but I really appreciated hearing from the community and understanding more about, you know, some of the, the reasons for this. So for, for all of that, I'm comfortable going with, with natural grass. I don't feel immensely strongly about it, the way I have other topics that this board has discussed, but I'm, I'm comfortable giving the direction of natural grass, so. but I'm, I'm comfortable giving the direction of natural grass, so.
Should I go? Are we going down the line?
Go ahead.
Light, no, jump in. I didn't know if we had a procedure. Okay. Um, so I, I really did also appreciate, um, the information, especially from, like, both the architects and, and Joel and everyone that provided those, um, site visit. And I, you know, having locations near and in proximity to us that actually function well with natural grass was kind of a, a hopeful moment for me. And, um, I've always supported the use of natural gas. I think it's, not gas, grass, sorry, I have a, I have a cold.
Natural gas.
Um, natural grass. Um, yeah. But, um, after looking at the plans and really looking at how much space we have to use, I think using something that's natural, that matches the C4 initiative that we've recently become partners with, with the village, is a teaching opportunity for our children. I'm sure I mentioned this last time. It's, it's an opportunity to show leadership in a way that we use natural materials in a new way to kind of maintain our sustainability, our resources, the way that we divert water, uh, the way that we grow fireflies, all those little things that you wouldn't get with a turf surface. And I do really appreciate, though, the architects, all the work that they did. Um, and, um, so that's where I am, yeah.
Joel, you have an opinion at this table. Would you like to say it?
Uh, I think I was fairly clear in what I said last time around, but I, the advantage of turf is that you can use it all the time. That's a clear advantage. It does cost another half a million more plus. Um, but much like Stephanie, I think that the, um, sacrifice of some amount of playing time on a natural grass field is worthwhile and valuable. And I think that with good design, which our design crew knows how to do, this can be a high-quality field that the kids can use a lot. And I think also, as Linda said, it does fit within the village in the forest, or whatever the current, uh, Latin phrase is for Riverside. Um, and there's an article in the paper today about nomo me, and so more natural things are considered good. And I, I accept the sacrifice of some playing time for what I think is a greater good in more natural out there. Now, lawn grass isn't all that natural, but it, I think it's better than plastic turf.
Plastic carpet, yeah.
Um, I will ditto everything. I will not repeat it. The only thing I'll add is, I also, if you had just told me when we first started it, I would say, we're gonna have to go turf. We can talk about all we want, but there's no other options. Um, I think the thing that sold me was the site visits that you guys did, honestly, in particular at River Forest, and kind of talking about the usability there compared to the, trying to match that to the usability that we're gonna have. And I feel like if that seems to stand up, it should stand up for us as well. And then in addition to that, I mean, first and foremost, it was usability. That was my concern. Um, I'm, I feel convinced that natural grass is going to be usable enough, like you guys all said. And looking at the cost component of it, um, I was actually expecting the cost difference to be much greater between the turf and the grass. But, uh, even so, just looking, you know, just some high-level looking at it, if you compare the turf versus the grass, there's about an $800,000 difference there. If you divide that by the $50,000 grass maintenance, that's 16 years of maintenance, so we're basically equal. Um, so the thing that I really came down to there was, uh, what has been stated by the last three people is, what community are we in? And the, the main, the absolute main reason I moved to this village is because of the schools, and the second reason I moved here is because of the whole village in the forest concept and the uniqueness of this town, and the vegetation, and the trees, and the age, and the different architecture of the buildings and all that kind of stuff. So with the feedback we've gotten from the community and feeling pretty convinced that other places have done really good engineered drainage and stuff like that, I, I think this is the right way to go. So I'm, I'm on grass now. I've gone back and forth like four times, so I'm on, I'm on grass. I'm not on, maybe I shouldn't say that.
You support.
I prefer natural grass for our field.
You'd have said it a lot more mellow, I guess.
That soundbite is out there forever now.
That's, that's pretty good. I'm going to.
Don't quote me on that one.
He's writing it down.
Yeah, he's writing that down. Don't write that down. I'm boring him.
I did not, I did not have an opportunity to talk to David today. We, we missed chances. I'm, I think he's a little less.
I did get to speak to David.
Oh, thank you. So I don't know if you.
But he, he shared with me, um, very similar, very similar situation. His number one concern is usability. However, he, I think, as Stephanie stated, kind of is willing to sacrifice a little usability if we go the grass route. I think the natural grass route, um, uh, I don't wanna speak for him. I think, just like all of us, he was, was speaking both, in the conversation with him, he was speaking on both sides, could support both sides, but he said that it was, there was no, no reason to, uh, um, bring up his position unless it seemed like there was a contest, you know, that we were split. So he said, you know, he, he support, he would support, you know, he supports the natural grass. I think he could be convinced of the turf, I think, but, you know.
Yep.
I think how we all feel, essentially, so.
I wish I could've, uh, been on the visit to River Forest. I definitely was very impressed with the fields at Schaumburg, but in, in agreement that we're not as high-use a situation as there. Uh, that said, it hasn't been mentioned so far tonight, I think, I think I'm okay to mention this, that we did receive a, an email from PE staff, which definitely outlined some concerns and outlined some benefits on the turf side. And I definitely think that, that's something we should, should bring up and acknowledge. And, um, I, I, I hear what folks are saying, and yes, the village in the forest, I didn't know there was a Latin phrase for it. I'm sure we could, any Latin experts here, could somewhat translate that?
I don't remember, Dan.
So, yeah, it, um, I, I definitely understand that appeal. Um, I was also surprised in the estimates coming out a lot closer than to a final total. And then, yeah, with annual maintenance, maintenance essentially being a wash, uh, I, I am a little concerned that, I guess, we, we know right now the fields are in bad shape. Maintenance is essentially not much, if any. Uh, so we're hoping that when we have a properly drained and graded field, that we'll be in a better place for that. I am concerned, uh, for the future, I guess, if we're 10 years down the road, uh, then if we have an unusable field again, I, I, I would, I would feel pretty bad about my role in, in, uh, approving something like that, that, um, where the village, where we spent a lot of money and, and got little for it, I guess. I, I do have some concerns on that. Um, but again, it sounds like there's a consensus in general amongst the board for grass versus, uh, versus turf. Is that basically what I'm hearing?
I believe so, yes.
Well, probably in 10 years, I'm sorry, Wesley. Probably in 10 years, you'll have to replace the plastic anyway.
10 or 15, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, in 15 years, you're absolutely right.
It's a conversation that can happen in the future, but either, either way, there, there are maintenance and replacement issues, and, and yet, you cannot just let grass sit. It has to be done properly. And I, that's why I really did appreciate the information about the other, the other, um, locations, that it can be done well.
Uh huh.
Leaves me to be hopeful at least, so.
But to your point, though, um, the, that's what I was trying to look at earlier today, actually, so maybe some validation from you guys. The, if I'm looking at the line items on the estimates, it'd be the, it would be the Cool Play with Olive Court Infill, which is six and a half units for 200, roughly 250,000. Grass installation and from scratch, grass topsoil would be 112,000 roughly. We do need to install an irrigation system, which is another 120. So those, those things are, are kind of a wash, but the, everything else in this proposal applies to both, from what I can tell. I mean, the drainage, the, all the stuff that goes into the drainage, the backstops, the maintenance, like, all that stuff looks equal to me. So I think I, I might've, I don't know if I talked to you guys offline after the PCC meeting, or if it was at our last board meeting, but if in five years or something like that, we need to pivot, would it be as simple as saying we just carve all that dirt and grass out of there, and we lay a $250,000 piece of plastic on top of it? Or is it a little bit more than that, or extensively more than that?
Excavation is a little bit different.
Okay.
Permeable pavers are a little bit different, uh, more permeable pavers, as Joel mentioned.
Oh.
So we'd have to go back and like tear up the parking lot and everything?
It'd be essentially, it'd be really good if I had to. Uh, so if you decide we must set that in the future, uh, there'd be a little more excavation that you do, uh, for synthetic field versus the grass. But you're right, everything else is, applies to all.
So you're saying we'd have to add more pavers somewhere else to make up the difference in the drainage? Is that correct?
Potentially, yeah.
Okay. Because of the village requirements for, and empty earth?
It depends as well on some of what, how those regulations change in the future.
So I don't think, though, that, uh, there's, the cost estimates that we saw, I don't think that would include the difference in permeable pavers, though.
No. Well, I wasn't including that because we wouldn't install them with grass.
Right.
I didn't think about that. We would have to install them if we, yeah, so there would be an added cost.
That is a bit of a savings, I guess, assuming we.
They are, that is accounted for.
Oh, it is.
The additional paver, well, it's in the total cost, so the.
You got a line item, the, uh, and then your Cool Play, uh, which is 39,000, 465, and then for grass, you're at 19,440. So it is less grass.
The, the gra, the grass option costs appro, approximately $500,000 less of permeable pavers.
Yeah. That's what I calculated, is roughly, uh.
So that's where a lot of the cost difference comes from.
So let's just say theoretically, it would cost us a million to a million two to move in a different direction. Add in a couple hundred thousand for labor and whatever, and who knows what inflation will be theoretically.
It wouldn't surprise me if it was a million to, if this did not work out in 10 years or five years, or what, whatever that board is deciding at the time, that to dig it up and replace it with the plastic rug that you talked about, plus another half million dollars in pavers, yeah, probably is a million or a million two.
And then.
Plus inflation.
When you say the excavation is different, so do we need to take all the stuff out of the ground, re-excavate, put it back in?
Uh, it's different stuff, essentially. You don't have to put it back in. You're gonna be starting from scratch, so, uh, synthetic turf has a deeper excavation than a natural grass field. So you'd be essentially excavating out all the natural grass field along with the drainage and starting from scratch.
Okay, so even though the drainage appears to be the same on the line item, it is different in how it's actually.
It is different than how it's installed.
Installed, yeah, okay.
Synthetic is essentially flat, grass is very fertile.
So it's not as easy as just taking off the grass and rolling out the plastic, but it's do, it is doable, but there will be a fairly, fairly significant cost to it.
Would lose the under drainage system for natural grass if you decide to go with turf.
Yeah. I'm, I'm still good with natural grass, but I just, that's, it's a good point, Dan.
It's a potential future cost.
Yeah. That we would potentially be putting that burden on, 'cause I probably won't be on this board in 10 years either.
So say you're now, yeah.
So say I'm now, I'll look back on these 10 years.
Some other people who are.
We'll see if I have any more kids.
But I mean, it, it, everything, everything is, is risk versus value.
Yeah.
And I, I've seen schools that had to rip up their entire turf because it was installed improperly, or because of some, had some issue that they had. Nothing is, nothing is guaranteed.
No.
But, um, I think we have an opportunity to use something that's natural and actually breathes and grows things, and gives our children at least some type of kind of Riverside appropriate venue. If that makes sense, yeah.
It works.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
All right.
Anything more to be said?
Got your direction?
Is there anything that you gentlemen want to add with regards to some of the other changes that we made, or anything?
Okay, so we talked about it. You don't have to answer any questions, but.
I'm good.
I just wanted to add a comment, uh, to Joel. Well, thank you for navigating this process.
Yeah.
Being a member of the Planning and Zoning Committee and the school board had to be a, you know, a tricky line to draw, and, uh, I, I, you did it with such, um, professionalism, so I just wanted to say thank you for that, yeah.
Yeah, especially the way you have to wear kind of two hats.
Yeah, yeah, and you did it.
And not wear a hat sometimes, um, at the other meetings, so I appreciate that, yeah.
And one of the things I said at PCC was, this is by far our most challenging piece of the pro, of like the bigger school thing that we had. Like, this has just been insane, so thank you for navigating it and bringing us along with you, so that we didn't have to do all this intense work. It's been a lot. I know how much you've been putting into it, so thank you.
Oh, I'm sure the hours, and you too, going in the meeting.
Yeah, and, yes, and thanks to DLA.
I will have to say, being an afternoon person, like, like, I'm, I'm finishing up, and I will have to say, having been here for my eight years, seeing all of these projects kind of come to completion is very, very exciting. I don't know about Linda, I'm gonna speak for you, but.
This is the one that I want. This was my biggest, this was the thing, you know, I, I had students at Central and.
My kids didn't go to the others, but I was so excited to see them happen, and, um, and my kid may or may not use this one, and that's okay too, but it's very exciting, so.
To see, to see what's been accomplished.
That's the campus that my family's only gone to, in District 96, and, uh, it was something when I moved into town I thought was lacking greatly, and I'm so excited to see this moving along, like, like, yeah, my children are not going to be recipients of this, and that is perfectly fine.
That's okay.
I'm excited for the community. I think it's just gonna be a really great addition to the community outside of the school as well, so.
I met with first graders at Central yesterday to share what a superintendent does.
Okay.
And I did promise them that they would have a playground after their second grade year.
Okay.
I did all this, I crossed all my fingers, and I told them that I really hope that this is going to happen.
Cause they're gonna hold you to that.
They're gonna hold me to it. They're gonna be disappointed when it doesn't have a swimming pool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a line.
So we shouldn't have filled that in. We should've kept it.
First to second grade, you can probably distract them.
Yeah.
It'll be nice that, uh, this new generation will not have the stories of whose car they hit and kickball, and who ran, you know, like, that'll be a good thing to put.
No, she's exactly right, you know, like, my, my, both my children, they had pavement their entire, their entire experience. And it, you know, it's, it's something, you're outdoors, but it's, it's not nearly the same, so it's exciting.
Living in this district and, and paying the taxes that we do, we, we've had, we have some, I, I, I hesitate to insert the word great old buildings, but they were old buildings. We're getting them to a place of being great, and, and it takes a lot of investment, and, uh, and I, I definitely am appreciative of the work the administration has put in on, on getting this done, as well as, as DLA. Uh, I, I think we've made some great changes over the years to a lot of schools. It would be good to, uh, see this continue at Central as well, as we talk in, in the midst of a construction project here.
Yeah.
So just, um, to understand next steps, either from Facilities Committee or from DLA, so now that you have direction, kind of what, what happens next, what happens April 6th? Um, I know the zoning plan, that's a recommendation to the village, so if you could just kind of walk me through what next steps, or.
No, uh, I, for the, I'll, how about I do the village part, and then you, I'll do the village process part, and then you'll do the design part. Um, basically, as you just noted, planning, and we talked about before, planning and zoning approve the four zoning variations. So those vary, the planning and zoning is a recommending body only in the village, that all, everything ultimately goes to the village board for approval. And so there is a village board meeting, of trustees, meeting tomorrow that will vote on these recommendations. Typically, when planning and zoning is unanimous, that's a good omen for village board. So, and any of you should come and attend and voice your support at the public comment. Those meetings work similarly to here. Um, and then, as, as Ryan notes in his letter, there's a site plan review meeting in, uh, the end of this month, and that addresses things that are not variations, that it, but that is approval for the general site layout. So there will be a substantial discussion on what we are providing for impervious area and stormwater storage. Because as I noted before, that's been a significant, uh, emphasis on the planning side of the village, just because too much water. Too much water in too quick a time is a bad thing, is the really short version. Um, and then I think I'll turn it over to Ryan for some of the design schedule items and when we'll be able to go to bid.
So the next step for us in terms of design is, once the site plan is approved, uh, we will, um, inform the engineering in earnest, submit those engineering plans to the village for approval. Once approved by the village, we'll then submit to the MWRD, that's about a 16-month process. We try to do that in tandem with, uh, construction documents. We'll see those being ready in fall of this year to put out to bid. Awards, uh, at the end of the year, or in January 24, and then starting construction in March, as soon as we're able to, uh, in 2020.
Does that answer your question?
Can we think further for, for facilities?
I do not. Thank you all for your comments and compliment, Linda.
Definitely thank you, Joel.
I had a time limit internally of eight PM for this conversation to end, so we are ten minutes ahead of schedule. At eight PM, I was going to say, all right. It's my role on the board. You have four more weeks to do it.
So that said, should we add this by nine minutes?
Nope.
Nope, okay, all right.
DLA has another meeting tomorrow night on our behalf.
Yeah, I'm sure they have things to do.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, well then I guess that moves us to the education committee.
Oh, it's us. Let's invite Angela.
Well, there, there are several, yeah, we're gonna pass Angela, cause there are several goals, obviously about living the plan, whether it's achievement or culture or climate or all these things, so we're gonna let Angela go through the slides.
Good evening. Um, I'm gonna kick off our update on the strategic plan with the goal one areas and then pass it along to all of my wonderful colleagues. So I'm gonna start with full day kindergarten. Um, under goal one, goal one being about rigorous learning for all students. Full day kindergarten was one of the strategies under goal one. And so we are in our first year of full day kindergarten. Ninety-seven percent of our kindergarten students are full day kindergarten students, so three percent are attending at a half day timeframe. We've noticed the prominent benefits of the gift of time, which I've talked about many times here at the board table, which have shown us that extra time, having full day versus half day. The extra time has provided us with opportunities to see growth in writing much quicker than we were seeing it in a half day program. Um, and just the, more opportunities for students to demonstrate success in all academic areas and social emotional areas as well. The key performance indicator originally for the strategic plan was originally going to be looking at kids' data three times a year. And as we know, I've talked at the board table before about how that was actually not the best key performance indicator for full day kindergarten. And that I was going to switch it to FastBridge, which is an assessment we've been using in our district for, for about five years now. And so I've been working on determining the goal that we would use with FastBridge. And I've been working with Don White, um, who's been working with us on our data pieces of the strategic plan, working with him to set realistic goals using FastBridge. And what we noticed with our data for FastBridge is that we have, from the nineteen twenty year, which was the first year of using FastBridge, we do not have spring data, so we can't use that year of data. From the twenty twenty-one year, that was our hybrid year of instruction, so that data is inconsistent. We didn't have all students in attendance. Some were attending school at home. We had switches from the, the students who are learning at home remotely versus students who are learning in person. Some students had moved between the two programs. So that data, Don and I discussed, is not really valid data to use when we're talking about trends and growth. So the first year of data we'd be able to use is last year's data, which is one full year of data before our full day kindergarten program. And then we'll have this year's data as well. But before setting a goal, Don's suggestion is that we wait for three years because that shows a trend. So there actually won't be a goal for this key performance indicator until spring of next year. Because we'll wait until we have next year's data also to show trends in the. So that's full day kindergarten.
And I'm just gonna interject. Part of the reason we're updating about all of our goal areas is because we had done this living the plan workshop, which I know the board is aware of, and we were all challenged to create elevator speeches, a very short succinct overview updates on progress toward our goals that we would share with the community at large, we would share with a colleague, and obviously wanted to share them with all of you.
Thank you. I shouldn't have said that in the beginning. Thank you. Standards-based grading and reporting is the second goal under goal one. We are on track for, currently on track for a twenty-five, twenty-six implementation, but that's a flexible schedule. We continue to educate our committee, our committee continues to educate itself, as well as this year we are working on educating our staff too, on why standards-based grading is useful and preferred and also how standards-based grading should work. And so we continue to educate the staff this year on that. Part of the education for the committee is also consulting with other districts. We're actually meeting with District ninety-five next week to talk with Ryan Evans, who's currently the principal of SE Gross and will be moving into the superintendent position of District ninety-five. He led, he helped lead the charge for standards-based reporting in District ninety-five. So we're meeting with him and my counterpart in District ninety-five, Kathy Cannon, to discuss their path towards standards-based reporting, which will help continue to educate us on our path.
Could, can I ask though, can you elaborate a little bit more on what you mean by standard-based reporting?
Absolutely. So all of, when we're teaching, we're teaching to the common core state standards. And everything we do should be aligned to the common core state standards in mathematics and reading, next generation science standards for science. And then the state's actually working on C, C-three standards for social studies. And then all of our encore areas also have standards from the state as well that they work, that they teach to. So right now, when students receive marks on, for report cards or marks on their papers or assignments or assessments, it is more number-based. You got three out of four correct, or you got fifteen out of seventeen correct. For fourth and fifth graders, those numbers then turn into grades for certain subject areas, reading, math and, no, math, science and social studies. And then for junior high, they get grades in all areas based off of those number assessments. Standards-based, what standards-based reporting does is it tells you more than just you got fifteen out of seventeen right. It says Angela knew this standard on multiplying fractions and meets the grade level requirement for multiplying fractions or exceeds the grade level requirement for multiplying fractions or is approaching it or not yet meeting it. So it looks at the actual content a student is learning and talks more about where they're at with their learning on that standard versus on this math test, I got ninety-five percent. Does that?
Well, so for, for the older kids, I mean, are we saying, are, are we still retaining letter grades or?
So that's what our committee is working on right now, and that's gonna be part of our conversation with Ryan Evans and Kathy Cannon. That will be, that's conversations we're having with other districts as well. Some districts will do standards-based reporting and grading for just their elementary grades. Some districts do do it K through eight. Some districts do K through seven. So there's different ways we can handle it, different ways we can do it, and the committee hasn't come up with a decision yet that's part of our education process. And then once we have that, then we'll start to communicate that with parents as well.
Like I said, I know it's not the same and, and we're talking different districts. I'm just, I'm thinking back to the, what, I guess it's Lyons Township, the experience there on how they had made some changes to their grading and more prominently their homework assignments. I'm wondering how, what our plan or what we're talking about here, how that would relate.
So we're still in a lot of planning and information gathering stages. Before I can give you answers to like what our plan is on that, we don't have a plan yet because we're still gathering information, because we wanna do what's best for Riverside District ninety-six. What we have learned, not just from Lyons, but from other districts as well, and Ryan Evans is gonna talk to us a little bit about this too, are some of the pitfalls districts have fallen into and how can we avoid that. One of the things that's gonna be very important is communication and communicating with our families and our parents so that they have a full understanding of what this looks like and what this means and how students are impacted by it. To do that, we have to, we have to make sure our teachers have a full understanding first so that when parents come to them, the teachers are able to answer questions. And so then to do that, we have to help educate them, but make sure we're educated as a committee first. So that's why we're not looking at implementation until twenty-five, twenty-six, because there's still a lot of work to do. And that's also why I say it's a flexible plan, because we may need to put it out past twenty-five, twenty-six, depending on how our process is going and how the educating of all stakeholders is going.
I, I definitely appreciate what's, what you're saying in terms of taking time, taking, evaluating what's best for our district in emphasizing communication. I, I personally would feel a little better if we were saying we weren't going to do away with letter grades for the older kids.
I can't say that yet though, without us talking to the other districts and really working towards what's best for District ninety-six. And if part of it's about educating families, which I think is where some districts have, haven't, may not have done that full, their full due diligence there, we might be, we might be able to go to standards-based reporting for our older kids where parents don't understand how that relates to their students' learning. We might not, um, you know, there are different voices on our committee. Our committee has representation from all schools and all grade levels. Kim Hefner is one of the co-leaders of the action team. And Katie Caissa, who is the student coordinator at Hauser, is the other co-leader. Todd Gierman, myself, and Chris Harvallis are the administrators on the team. So there's a lot of voices in this, and we're going to listen to all those voices, and we're gonna also talk to the other districts. And we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna do what we think is best for District ninety-six students and families. And I will keep you guys abreast along the whole way. But right now, I don't wanna say we are definitely not going to do grades for older kids because we are still in the information gathering stage.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I won't be here when you make this choice, but I will say, having taught at a secondary education institution, there should be talk about transition if you do, if you do decide to go with standards. And if I was a parent, my recommendation would be not to make it five million pages of standards that they will not be able to navigate. And I know you, we've had that discussion in education committee, something that's doable. It, it's tricky. When I first started teaching, standards just became more defined. And so it is important that we know that that child knows measurement versus how to graph and how to analyze things. And those are important, so the standards issue is, is really, it's tricky. It's very, very useful. But as Dan is saying, I totally understand. It has to be something that people understand. And how do they transition to their high school if they're currently using letter grades? So no matter what you guys decide, now you're still learning. There should be a transition moment from that eighth grade.
And Sherri, we have talked about this at the education committee planning meeting, so you're absolutely right. And you know that, and I'll say it for the whole board, I am fully in agreement that there does need to be a transition. I have personally experienced a child who went from standards-based reporting in elementary school to grades in junior high. And she had no clue that a D is not a great thing because she was so used to the standards way of looking at things. And so it wasn't a, she knew Fs were bad, but it wasn't an F, so she was fine. So there was a lot of conversation at our house about her transition. So yes, whether we do just elementary standards and then go to grades at the junior high, we're gonna need a transition from elementary to junior high. Whether we do standards K through eight, we're gonna need a transition from the junior high to what high school grades look like. No matter where we, how we go with standards-based reporting, there has to be a transition plan so that students and families understand the change.
Right, and I appreciate that you're looking at all those things. Like I know when I went to graduate school, we had talks twenty years ago about what does assessment mean? What does learning mean? Well, how do we know they learned it? And these are still happening today, and so the standards are helpful, but it's still ongoing. It's just tricky.
Is there not a discussion at the high school level to contemplate this type of a change? Cause I feel like this is popping up everywhere.
It is. I don't know. I can't speak to where RB is. I don't think they're talking about standards-based reporting. I know Lyons did do it. Most high schools, a lot of high schools, don't look to standards-based grading and reporting because of the transition then to college and how that translates to college applications and GPAs and all of that. Now with colleges changing how they're doing applications, I don't know if that will change things for high schools or not. But a lot of high schools don't look at standards-based reporting. They still stick with a lot of letter grades. I will, as we get further in the process, I will talk with RB throughout this process to see where they're at with things and just keep an ear to the ground, but right now I haven't heard them talking about this type of thing.
As one who's participated in a lot of, or helped out with, with college applications, I would think recently, it's been more of an emphasis on GPA and grade point average and less emphasis on testing, on standardized testing like SAT and ACT. Now that was somewhat for the pandemic, and I've heard that some schools are switching back after, next year. But for this year, definitely, I know my daughter put a big emphasis on GPA as opposed to SATs.
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, and just to think, continuing the conversation with always having, like I know you partner with people and this curriculum, that, I forget her name now, the curriculum person at RB, but all those, all, whatever we feed into all those other high schools that you just keep that partnership, because then you'll have that growing kind of relationship. And I know you already do that, so I appreciate that.
Angela, and I might have misquoted you here, but you said something about better understanding of how the kids are impacted. Is the thought that, and it, does this get back to the idea of we're teaching to the tests, so the kids are only learning the test thing? Not that we're doing that, but that's, you know, an idea out there. Or when we talk about standards-based, that we're focusing on only those standards that are in the Illinois state standards to the detriment of something else? Or am I totally off?
Well, I won't say you're totally off.
Well, kind of. You can say kind of though. I'm all right with that.
What it, it, so it's not teaching to tests. It is refining and focusing our instruction. So I think about our previous math curriculum, math in focus. There were things being taught that were not developmentally appropriate at certain grade levels. We found at fourth grade especially, that there were concepts that were fifth and sixth grade mathematical concepts being taught in math in focus, but the kids weren't developmentally ready for that and didn't have some of the prior prerequisite knowledge. So by looking at, by, by ensuring we're teaching the standards at each grade level, then we are ensuring we're looking at vertical alignment so that students have the prerequisite knowledge they need so that they're able to build on that knowledge, whether it's in mathematics, English Language Arts, science or social studies. They're able to continue to build on that knowledge as they grow. So it's focusing instruction, not really teaching to tests so that we are focused and deliberate about what we're teaching and we're able to communicate not just the exact thing we're teaching, but how students are mastering what we're teaching. So it's not just you got ninety-five percent right on this math test that covers six different concepts. It's you've mastered these three specific standards that were assessed on this assessment. We are aligning our assessments to standards. We're making sure that what we teach is what we're assessing. So if I'm going to teach three specific standards in mathematics, that's what the assessment's gonna cover. It's not gonna throw extra things in that I didn't teach. So right now, what we're actually doing this year is we're working on ensuring our classroom assessments are aligned to standards. Our common assessments are aligned to the standards so that we know this is what we're gonna assess our students on. So we need to make sure we're giving them the opportunity to succeed by teaching the standards that we're planning to assess on.
Thank you. That's, that helps a lot in my understanding.
Okay.
Thank you. And I will say something about access skills. You know how in order to do harder math, you have to have certain capabilities, like you have to be able to move variables and things like that? So if we're able to pin down whether a child learned that access skill, that they're able to identify a variable and be able to transition that, then we at least know that they'll be ready to transition to eighth grade or Hauser whenever they're gonna do those things. So part of that is really, really important. And same thing with reading, if they know that they have those pieces of early reading strategies, then they'll be able to do the critical analysis that we ask them later when they analyze a story. So it's, it's, yeah, it's an interesting challenge. I think it'll be really interesting to see what you guys do.
I always think about it, like if my son took a math test and he gets an eighty-five percent in his mind, he's like, yeah, I got eighty-five percent, I'm good. Well, if every question you got wrong is about one concept, you are going to continually have trouble.
Exactly.
And as a parent, there have been many times, even with him in high school, like go get your test and figure this out. And so it's like, that I think would be very helpful as a parent to know.
Like this is what you're struggling with.
You know, like, like you're struggling here because of this.
And that's the whole, that's sort of the impetus behind standards-based grading is that kids then can become conversant in the piece that they don't understand as opposed to I got eighty-five. No, you're really struggling with this little, eighty-five's good, but like there's, there's something you didn't understand here.
You're gonna struggle in the next section and it's gonna steamroll, yeah.
Any other standards-based questions?
Did you think that was gonna be a topic, like a hot topic?
I didn't.
But it will be, so that's okay.
So we talked a little bit about some of the other things we've been working on right there, common assessments and making sure assessments are aligned to our grade level standards, that they're not including standards from a grade level or two above or a grade level or two below. We are, as we move forward, we are going to continue to work to align our, our assessments. Currently, elementary is working on mathematics. We did not start with English Language Arts because we knew that was going into a review. So knowing that the assessment pieces might change if we utilize a new curricular resource, we wanted to work with what we know is solid. we wanted to work with what we know is solid, which is I read in mathematics right now. And then the junior high teachers are all working within their core or on core subjects to ensure alignment of assessments. But then they're also putting together unit plans with those assessments that talk about what's the concept being taught in that unit? What's the pre-assessment to see the prior knowledge students have before the lesson is taught or the unit is taught? What are the assessments that will be given, um, the formative assessments that will be given throughout the unit? And then that unit plan also includes that summative assessment that will show growth from the pre-assessment to the summative as well as show how the formative assessments inform their instruction to the end. So that's what our junior high is working on right now. And then we will, next year, continue that standards work. But we also, and we'll continue to educate the committee and the staff, but then we'll also towards spring, start to educate families on exactly the conversation we're having at this table. The purpose of standards, what are standards, why standards, all of those pieces. And then 2425, again, flexible plan, but right now, 2425, we're slated to continue education of all stakeholders. And um, exploring and finalizing the reporting tool we'll be using. Because as Sheri mentioned, like, you, we don't want to have 50 standards that we're trying to teach and 50 standards we're trying to report to families.
And I don't want to read that in a packet when he's mailing it.
Exactly. So, so we'll be working on that as well over the course of these next couple of years. The third goal under Goal One is equity and opportunities, which is actually a goal that we've talked about is spread out throughout all five goals in the strategic plan. Uh, but it does rest in Goal One. And so one of the things that we're beginning to do as we continue to work on equity and opportunity is that our administrative team is going to participate in Equity and Anti-Bias Professional Learning Series. That series will be with Dr. Yvette Dubiel. We'll have five two-hour sessions um, over the course of September through January. And it's really a chance for us as a leadership team to level set and make sure we have a common understanding before we go on to work on, like, Goal Two has Culturey Responsive Pedagogy. So before we go on to work on professional learning under equity, opportunities, culture responsive pedagogy, all those pieces, we want to make sure our leadership team is on the same page with our understandings. And that's what this professional learning series is going to begin to do, put us on the same page. So we were actually talking about it today at our leadership team meeting, and all the building principals were very excited about that. Felt that it is a need for us to make sure we're on the same page before we start working with staff members on certain pieces. And then a science, quick science curriculum update. Uh, and this falls under Goal One because of Goal One being about student growth and achievement and high level of learning for all students. It took some time to secure the materials for our pilot. I know that I planned to pilot this spring and we'd make a decision and adopt a new curriculum if, or we'd adopt a new curriculum. Took some time to secure the materials for the pilot. So rather than rush a pilot within a two-month process, we are going to pilot the first series in September and October, pilot the second series in October, November, or, I'm sorry, in November, December, and January. And then we'll work as a committee to rate the resources. Um, the piloting team will rate the resources as well as we'll get student ratings from our older students. And then we'll make a determination um, in February on which resource that would be. And we'll bring that recommendation to the board. That's it for Goal One. Any other questions for me?
I would be curious to hear how your anti-bias stuff goes, because I've been, we started a journey in our organization, there are, you know, 40,000 people going through, and it started very, very basic, and it's gotten a lot more more intense. I don't know, it's probably not the right word. But personally, I find this stuff fascinating because it's all about the human brain and just like being aware of what you're not aware of is is absolutely fascinating. And I love this stuff. Some of it's really bad, but most of it is really good. So I'm curious to see what what the staff thinks about it. Because it, it's very interesting. It's a very interesting concept. And I think just being more self-aware gets you thinking differently. And with the different, you know, your classroom is made up of so many different students, it it does feel like a really good fit for them to just have a little bit of that awareness. And it's not about any one person or how you think or how you behave. It's more of just that collective knowledge and and how humans think and how your own brain works and stuff like that. So I personally enjoy this stuff, and most of it's been pretty good in in helping you kind of just be better people, so to speak. So I'm curious to hear how this rolls out when you actually have the training.
I appreciate those thoughts because they're right, they're spot on. And so that self-reflection and looking at how each of us view things um, within ourselves and just within our circles and then within our professional circles as well. Um, I'm also excited for this work and just to see where we go with this as a leadership team and as a district.
And the woman that um, we're planning to work with is the same consultant that's been working with Riverside Brookfield High School. Um, has worked with um, South Berwyn where we're sort of closely, you know, I I know that leadership team, we know that leadership team well. They've, they've spoken very highly and positively. But just in this, in this area, we know a number of school districts that have worked with the same person, so it seems like a good fit.
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question. How did you find the right provider to? Because this is obviously starting to delve into some hot button topics that I'm slightly concerned about, but it's how do you find the right, the right consultant or provider to give you? And the whole point is an unvarnished look at things, but how do you find one who's coming at it very truthfully and not not flavor of the month versus really, we're trying to grow long term.
I've been talking about this for a while. Um, and just in our own circles, Martha with the other superintendents, myself with my counterparts, have been ear to the ground, listening to how other people have been, how other districts have been working through this and handling it. Um, and we ended up coming together and both had had this particular name, Dr. Dubiel's name, in mind. And when I mentioned it from work I'm doing with uh, the cohort I'm involved in um, through IASA, I had heard of Dr. Dubiel through that. And she had talked about some of the districts she was working with. And when I brought the name up with Martha, she said, oh, I've heard this person also, and these are districts I've heard. And so um, Martha had reached out to those superintendents, I talked to my counterparts. And um, in those conversations, realized that this is probably the best person to move forward with. And we had a couple of other names, but felt that especially given that we feed into RB um, and they're using her, and they've developed an action plan that they've published on their website and that they're moving forward with, and you can see the progress. We knew that this was probably the right person because she's already engulfed in our community.
And I said, the other organization she worked with is uh, some extensive work with Ladsy, which is our special ed co-op. So it just felt like there were, you know, Angela described it well, sort of a coming together of thinking about the who.
Yeah, no, RB has a, it's pretty well laid out about the topics they looked at.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're still under Education Committee, we're at Goal Two.
For um, for an action team that is dedicated to social emotional learning, there are a bunch of rule followers on our our action team. So when they were told, we're gonna create one slide, that's what they created.
Don't do more than you have to.
Well, it was actually a challenge to distill the conversation that we had of, again, given the directions of what is the work that we've done to date and what are the next steps if we're gonna um, distill it into a quick summary. I don't know if I'll hit quick, but I will do my best. So, and a lot of this, all of this really should sound familiar to you because it's, again, the work that we've been updating throughout the year. Um, but in terms of the accomplishments that really stood out to the team, they are feeling proud about the consistent um, positive feedback they've gotten about the district-wide um, professional development sessions that we've led after school for some of those 75-minute professional development, professional learning sessions that have been about um, classroom practices, teacher language, creating classroom communities, really building those pieces into teacher practice. It is ongoing work. It is work that is um, as engaging for a first-year teacher as a third-year teacher because there are always things you can be thinking about differently. Even as we just referenced with regard to culturally, cultural awareness and just understanding the world around you. They were excited to share that we are this year piloting both the SEL screener and uh, curriculum options for next year. So the second administration of our SEL screener, the past screener, will be after the conclusion of IAR testing in the next couple of weeks. Um, the students participated in that in October, and so this will be the second time that we'll be taking kind of a a temperature of how our students are feeling about themselves as learners. Um, and then the um, subset of our SEL action team is um, the week after next, gonna start the second. All of the teachers start working on the second uh, SEL curriculum package, Fly Five. They've spent the last seven weeks with um, Second Step and their students, and they're gonna move into Fly Five with the goal of being able to come to a decision about which one of those to move forward with for our K-5 classrooms in the fall. Um, looking at the overall goal, um, they also wanted to highlight the equity work that adults have started doing. It hasn't been as consistent in every building. Every building is kind of doing a little bit different work with this. Um, but facing history in ourselves is a, is at the junior high, and that's the program that's used in the social studies classes and with the um, teachers at the junior high to really look at, how are we telling the stories that we you know, how are we teaching history to our students? How are we understanding these events that have happened in the world? And then many, um, whoops, sorry, I just lost myself. Building base book studies have also been an issue or been a way that some of our communities are looking at some of that equity work and some of the um, again, just kind of increasing perspective of what does it mean to be a teacher of a diverse classroom? And then the action team themselves has been doing a book study of Power of Our Words, which um, has to do with promoting effective teacher language and classroom strategies, which again ties back into some of our PD sessions. In terms of next steps, um, there's a lot of excitement and um, energy around the idea of starting off in the fall with a K-5 SEL curriculum that's consistent across buildings and um, classrooms. So that's an exciting um, step for everyone. Develop and determine a realistic plan to have all staff trained in responsive classrooms. So this summer, we have, I think, 12 more, uh, right around there, across um, K-8. Uh, teachers going to that responsive classroom training, which is a week in August that they're giving up to go and participate in the really intensive, um, you know, five full days of learning about this responsive classroom model, which again is um, really focused on those teacher and classroom practices that promote student voice, that create a solid community where kids know that it's okay to take risks, where they understand that if, um, you know, that there are different ways of learning things, that there are different ways of demonstrating knowledge, and that those kinds of um, flexibilities are are built in and and respected. Um, it's not, I'll just sit and do everything the same way. So the, if, everyone who's come back from that training universally has had just really concrete things to put into action and has had very positive things to say. It is a very big ask, though, um, to, and it's always in August, in Chi- the Chicago-based training. You know, it's always generally the same week, so it just, it's, it's, it's hard to get everyone able to participate in that. And so um, there are also uh, questions staff had about, you know, how is this related to maybe the contract? Are there ways to take the PD days during the year? And do some responsive classroom training during those times? Responsive Classroom and the Center for Responsive Schools is pretty prescriptive in how they will allow this training to be given. So it's uh, gonna take some more work um, on the part of the action team, the admin team, to um, really put into place a plan to get everyone trained. I think one thing we're starting with is really um, saving some spots for any new hires this year and encouraging um, that as a possibility if if they do that before they start with us or
What's the barrier?
Within the next few years. I'm sorry.
What is the barrier?
The barrier is just a, it is a week in August.
Not during the school year?
Not, it's not offered during the school year.
So people can't attend? Or like, I don't understand.
It's, yeah.
It's voluntary to, you, you give, you basically give up four week, four days of
Four and a half days, yeah.
You know, time. Um, we pay the registration. We don't pay people.
But it's not like they're going to work, work, they're going to learn.
So it's during their time off to attend an intensive workshop.
You know, kids are home in the summer, childcare's a bear, you know, there's a lot of different, if they're, if that's the one period that their family can go on vacation, it's hard to give that up. As great as the training is, I will admit, it's not, maybe as good as vacation.
And we've talked about them coming to the school district, using our institute days. They, for being a great model and great framework for schools, they do not have a school-friendly model
Yeah.
to bring to the schools. Now, maybe it just really works for them to offer these August workshops. Maybe their trainers are also educators that don't have time.
That is the case, yeah.
There's a lot to it. Um, but it's, it's a great framework and we'll, we'll keep at it.
Yeah.
But it's the same week every year?
It's generally within the same, you know, they have um, they have trainings across the country, but they're, the trainers are educators, and so they're limited in the numbers that they can offer. And for the last three years at least, it's always been the same um, two-week window in August. This year, actually, the, they have an elementary and a junior high training. And last year, they were only offered one each week. This year, they are offering both, both weeks. So they're, they are getting some
Some flexibility.
Some flexibility. They're hearing some of our um, feedback that like, you know, it's really tough to just thread that needle. Um, but it's, it's, they also have various, um, you know, one-day trainings and and pieces of it that that we've toyed with, you know, do we bring this in? But then the cost of that for not really getting the full impact of the program, it's, it's a tough.
And they wouldn't come and train 150 staff members anyway. They would require, they would do it in small groups.
They would come and train a group of 30
Yeah.
Uh, for, you know, a cost equivalent to if 30 people went to the workshop. But they don't have a model. They don't have the numbers of trainers available to do an entire district at one time in one week. So we're, it's a, I, I do think it's a solvable problem. It won't be something that happens in one year. You know, it'll be a process of um, having uh, some flexibility for new hires or thinking about it in terms of our mentor, um, teacher-mentor plan of thinking about, okay, if you commit to this, then the second summer, that's a part of our, part of the plan.
I mean, if you can plan a year or two years out, I mean, some of these um, reasons for not going kind of go away.
Yeah, so.
I just, I, I'm just curious because uh, talking to a number of teachers at Ames in different capacities, uh, I can hear this, whether it's explicit or not, just like being at the board table, kind of understanding what this is. I hear it coming out, like, unsolicited, very favorable. To the point of like, changed the way I teach my classroom, favorable. So I am, I guess I'm struggling a little bit of why somebody isn't like begging to go to this thing.
And there are people who are very eager to go and have said, I wish I could go. I cannot go in August. Like, that just doesn't work.
Gotcha.
Um, but I do think part of it also is, right now, there are maybe one or two or three teachers at Ames, or one teacher at Hollywood is gone. I think as more teachers go and that becomes more of like, it changed the way I teach.
Do we not have a lot of people in the district? I was thinking, maybe, maybe I'm thinking it's more widespread than it actually is.
It's, it's decently widespread. You know, there's, there's a good number. I don't have that number on the top of, off the top of my head. But um, but it's not, I don't know if we're at the tipping point yet where everyone is like, you gotta go to responsive.
Okay.
It's not a major, I don't think it's a majority.
It's definitely not a majority, yeah. Part of the, it is a majority, I think, of teachers who are on our SEL action team, or they're very well represented. And that has been a lot of the work of these professional development sessions this year, too, is highlighting the fact that these are all responsive classroom techniques and ideas, and this is just a taste of it. This is one thing you can take away, but there's a lot more that's out there and available.
Well, and that, you just, something you just said clicked with me. If a lot of the people on this committee have gone through it and believe in it, that explains why you have that as an action plan to get everybody trained on it. So thank you for connecting the dots for me.
It was before I started, I think, in the, in the last school year, the action team and the um, maybe even the strategic plan team made that as a, a commitment, that that was the um, you know, approach and the philosophy that we wanted to have um, guiding our work. Which, like I said, yes, the training is the hallmark of it, but there are components of it that can shape and guide our work even in the absence of having everyone fully trained.
And that's happening at the actual school PDs, that the people who are trained are sort of supporting others to bring those practices. It's probably not the same as going through that four-day, very immersive professional learning opportunity.
The next step, Angela kind of touched on this a little bit as well, but developing that deeper understanding of culturally responsive teaching, what it looks like and what it sounds like in practice. That's work that we are really, as she mentioned, beginning at our admin level, but it's something that the team members are committed to not letting it fall off the radar. And so that remains a goal and an idea that is important to keep in the forefront. Continue to build capacity structures, tools to embed SEL throughout instruction. Again, the, if this team could achieve nothing else, I think they would be happy to hear if every one of our teachers in the district understood and really believed that SEL, yes, having direct instruction, having this curriculum is one component of it, but that it is so essential that it's these practices and this knowledge and this ability to foster student ownership and build in opportunities for students to make challenging decisions and scaffold that with them and to have good experiences working out minor conflicts with their peers. All those things are important, that they're happening throughout your instruction, throughout your day. They're just part of your classroom community. And then continuing to highlight and foster student ownership of learning. And this one really dovetails with the standards-based grading. We talked about it in our Goal Two meeting, or in our Goal Two group, that that standards-based grading really lends itself to so much more student ownership of learning because of exactly the things you guys were just talking about of knowing I got an 85 on a test versus knowing I still can't figure out how to cross-mulally. I still, that's just, I need to figure out a different strategy or figure out a different way of understanding it. How to kind of, where do they want to devote their energy and where they should be devoting their energy rather than just saying, I got an 85, I don't know how else to study for this, I don't know how else to learn this, but here's what I want to tackle. Here's what I know I need to work on. Questions?
All right.
Don, I'm going to do Goal Four before Goal Three, just because we felt it felt best under the Education Committee piece, so. Oh, all right. But Don, are you operating that for me? Are you doing that? Okay. It's up there. And I have, it's there, okay. Okay. There's the projector. Okay. All right. So the Goal Four is Family and Community Partnerships. As you know, I facilitate that action team with Sarah Hickey, who's a wonderful partner there. And when we were, you know, really trying to distill down into this succinct way of like, what is this committee really all about? As you know, last year, I think I believe I shared a vision for the committee. We did the family engagement survey this this mid-year, this school year. And then we looked at some research behind the, from Dr. Karen Mapp, a woman that had developed the survey. And she really kind of put it into sort of a flow chart, right? That the reason we want to have strong partnerships with families is ultimately to build trust, build relationships, and overall build that capability and confidence, both for the educator as well as for the parent, that everybody is ultimately there to help and support the child. So we kind of were able to kind of distill down, all of our work is about building trust, building relationships, and building capability and confidence with families. So then we looked at what are the actionable pieces that we would like to accomplish here as we move forward. As you know, our action team is made up of educators as well as parents, and it's really been a great experience to be able to just have that dialogue in an ongoing way. One of the things that we're really looking at, this came up through both the Parent Leadership Team, our PTAs and PTOs, as well as the Family Community Partnerships Action Team, is some method to better pair parents with new families that are coming into the district, both our new kindergarten families, but also families that move in, whether it's beginning of the year, mid-year. Some kind of parent ambassador, parent mentor, parent partnership. So I think it really takes both PTAs, PTOs, as well as the district working together to make that happen. There's just even issues of permission and allowing that kind of thing to happen. So that's an actionable step that we've started talking about. Would love to have that in place for the new school year. I think it may still be a daunting task. I know some of the different PTAs and PTOs have already tried that, let's say, one ambassador for all new families. We'd really like to create kind of a direct, one-on-one parent partnership. The other thing we've talked about is really focusing in on the transition to Hauser. We know that that's a significant time, and the life of families, the life of children that moved to Hauser is a big deal. And there's been a lot, we took sort of a deep dive and looked at the outdoor education program that's been sort of lovingly known as Laredo Taft, because that's the camp that the kids go to for an overnight. It's a program that really fell away because of the pandemic, and it's been difficult to put it back together now. Just some of these camps are not available doing the same kind of work. So looking at some kind of option, we also looked at like a hands-on STEAM or STEM building project. There's a hovercraft project where an organization brings you literally like the materials and makings for hovercrafts and small groups of kids get together and create these. I think you really get to move up above the ground. We weren't, I think we kind of leaned, started leaning toward maybe the outdoor ed is really still more the the love and the tradition in this community. So looking to, working with the Hauser team to find a way to bring that back, if not Laredo Taft, a different outdoor education experience. And then you even heard Kesmira talk tonight about a one-book, one-school. Most of our schools are doing that, most of our elementary schools. It's a, it's a big task. It's a big undertaking. One thought came up that should it be a one-book, one-district kind of event? And another nice way to align, the schools bring families together. Schools could still do their own kind of unique and specific things, but that the whole district would be reading a great piece of children's literature together. So something else we're looking at. So again, one-book, one-district. Also bringing back, and it's kind of a bringing back but enhancing, this year it's going to be a family math night that's going to happen on April 13th. Again, just a huge thank you to Sarah Hickey for making this happen. It looks like it's going to be a great event. It is a family event. It's a bring your child and work with educators to create math games, things to take home. We're going to do it in partnership with the Bilingual Parent Advisory Group, so that Alex Guevila-Lopez, our EL support person, is going to make sure that families that are Spanish-speaking, that may feel uncomfortable coming to an event like that, will also have Spanish-speaking groups and opportunities. So just really excited about bringing all that together, and you should all come. Even if you don't have young children that want to do math that night, you might want to, you might want to join us. And then we continue to talk about Family Information Night. So we've done everything from helping your child navigate social media, sort of anti-bullying, understanding bullying and social, what's normal social conflict. We did some other things on just sort of understanding what children can encounter on the internet. So we did a presentation on just understanding anxiety in children. So there've been a lot of different topics, but again, using this group to really sort of plan for topics that may be of greatest interest to our families. So these are actionable steps, not everything happening immediately and right away, but it starts to feel, again, from this group, that it's, there's a nice opportunity to make some very specific things happen that we think can really benefit our families, our students specifically, and bring our staff in closer partnership with everybody. So, any questions about that?
Is Laredo Taft still available, or we're still figuring themselves out?
And they're not, so they can take the numbers. It's all very
Loose.
iffy. Yeah, yeah. But it does seem to be this great tradition when you talk about, like, kids love it. Parents who were kids here love it. Like, it just has this great love and
But even pre-COVID, we got too big to go as one group, so then it also lost that feeling of community. So.
Yeah, and to hear, so Meredith Harvey is the teacher that coordinates at Hauser, and she came in, and she's actually on the Family Community Partnerships Action Team, and she came and sort of, sort of broke down the purpose, and some of it is outdoor ed. But it really starts as this sixth-grade experience, fall of sixth-grade year, because all the children have come from four to five elementary schools. So it's really designed to be kind of transition, team-building, relationship-building. So I think when we take those concepts, like, what else could we do instead if we can't get back to Laredo Taft?
And I know the kids did love it. Mine did. But how, that's why I was asking about what the hiccups at Laredo Taft.
And then the other thing that came up is some families are hesitant about an overnight. And so this idea of also like talking to other districts that are doing a day-long, like, maybe you go early and you don't get back till nighttime, but maybe it's not a sleepover experience. Would that help, you know, all families really feel connected? So just things that are, we're looking at.
Do we have a lot of families concerned about overnights? Because I'm just thinking, like, I send my kids to summer camp for two weeks every year and stuff like that. Not that everybody does it, but like
More than you might think. I don't have the exact numbers. I've looked at them. We've, like, April and Chris have carefully looked at it, and we want to make sure that it's not money that's a barrier. Some families just are not comfortable having their child go away
Yeah.
for an overnight. So. And then some families who are hesitant and they're strongly encouraged, then end up feeling pretty good about it, but yeah, it's
For what you're describing, though, would that be an option? So like, some kids would stay over and others would come back, or?
Not with, not with Laredo Taft. What, the families that chose not to have their children go for an overnight did the Go Apes, the Go Ape Course, Road Course. They tried to create sort of a similar opportunity that would take sort of just the school day.
Is this just a one-night, or is it a multi-night?
It's a one-night. And then they go, the eighth graders go to a place called Bradford Woods that also is gone. It's in Indianapolis, and that was a two-night overnight. I think when April said she started, maybe it was even a three-night.
I hope so, if you're going to go all the way down to Indianapolis.
I think Laredo Taft used to be a two-night, and it got switched to a one-night, because it was one group and then the next group.
That's correct, yeah.
And then they would overlap one of those days where everybody was there.
Right.
Yeah, like, the bus would come and a bus would go. I know, like, one principal would go one, and the assistant principal, they'd sort of wave crossing paths, I think, so. Yeah, I mean, it's a great opportunity. I did start to ask other superintendents, too, if they're still doing outdoor education. Heard about some other camps that might be worth looking at, some that might be just a day camp opportunity. So bringing kids together and just that pretty unique experience, non-academic, non-classroom.
I would just hope that if there's a certain amount, and I guess you said it's more than a thing, I would hate for all kids not to have an overnight opportunity if it's for a question of a few or some uncomfortable with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's hard when talking about inclusivity, you know, it's like you want it to work for everybody, and that can be a tall order sometimes.
Understood.
Yeah.
Well, you give everybody the opportunity. Whether they choose that opportunity is up to them, but everybody has the opportunity. If you're not comfortable with it, don't participate. But I don't think you take the opportunity away because some people might be uncomfortable. That's your choice versus you don't have the opportunity. I think those are two very different things, so.
Although it's tricky, because then how do you give the child that doesn't go that experience where they have that, that community that is really community-building exercise? So it, you know.
But if their parent chooses not to have them participate, I'm not sure there's much we can do about that. I'm just saying there's a difference between not providing somebody an opportunity and somebody choosing not to take the opportunity they were given.
I think, I think the day camp seems like a reasonable alternative to at least give them something off-campus that is fun and exciting, and they'll remember. But it's a challenge.
Off-campus, it's fun and exciting, but a day camp seems a far cry from an overnight, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, one night, I don't know.
I guess one night isn't that.
One night to me seems like, okay, that's a lot of trouble for one night.
Still.
Because it used to be a lot longer. It was kind of this whole weekend. They can be.
Or scary.
I understand that. I've done the Girl Scout mom, and we did all of that. It's, I understand what Martha's saying, though. It's tricky, so.
Well, thanks, because these are exactly the conversations that have happened in the Family Community Partnerships Action Team, too, so.
The one thing I might throw in for you, Martha, is being with the PTO/PTA liaison, we meet monthly, we're meeting Monday, actually. And I think the last, at least the last three months that we've met, I know you've woven some of these topics into the PTA presidents or whoever the representative for the PTA is at that particular meeting, looking for feedback from them. And there's been a lot of good conversation, people that have been around in the community for quite some time and have some of these same dialogues of like past experiences that either they had if they grew up here, or their kids are having now, or had, depending on where their kids are at. So just a lot of collaboration with a lot of different groups, trying to figure some of this family-community partnership stuff out. So just calling that out, just kind of what you're doing to try to tackle some of these. In my opinion, I think this is the hardest goal, really, because it's just so blue sky.
Nebulous, but nebulous, yeah. All right. Now, I think we shift gears, sorry. I think now we shift gears to the next, we organized this under the different committee topics, so. I think that finished up education.
Yes.
Finished up education. Now we go to personnel.
We put Goal Three under personnel, just to keep it all really confusing.
Do we need to talk about this professional learning proposal?
That's what Angela talked about. That's what the
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm the goal champion over Goal Area Three, which is high-quality staff. And the focus of high-quality staff is to focus on recruiting, developing, and retaining exceptional personnel for all positions. The Goal Area actually has comprised of two action teams. The Diverse Workforce Action Team, which I'm the action team leader of. And then we also have the Professional Learning Action Team, which Angela oversees. And so she's probably going to come up here in a minute after I'm done. Okay, yes. So the Diverse Workforce Action Team, what we've really been looking at is we've been trying to, as it states here, developing and implementing strategies designed to recruit and retain exceptional talent from diverse backgrounds. So while the Goal Area is recruit, develop, and routine, recruit and routine has really been our focus. As we've looked at our existing practices and as we look to, you know, make recommendations for change, we are trying to look through everything through the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. I do want to say this, we have a great team. It's a really good group of staff that are on the team. And I know that some teams have seen contraction, and we've actually expanded over the past year. And there's really good energy. A lot of the work, a lot of the things that, you know, a lot of the ideas, it's, a lot of it's very much a warm fuzzy. It's, a lot of it is that belonging. How do we? Everybody enjoys working in the district. Part of it is how do we promote ourselves? How do we make people understand what it's like to work here and want to be a part of this? So as we've been looking at the different areas, like with our vacancy postings, how do we make our vacancy postings more lively, really reflect who we are as a district, as opposed to, this is the position, you know, first grade, you know, 180 days? And really try to say who we are as a district as people are applying. Also looking at, we've identified area universities that have really strong diversity, equity, and inclusion programs. And we've targeted those and have begun to create relationships with them in, not only from the standpoint of from the recruiting aspect, in getting our vacancies out to them and part of their graduate and alumni newsletters, but also starting the process of establishing relationships from an internship, student-teacher type relationship with those universities as well. Additionally, we've begun looking at our application process. And Martha knows that we've talked a lot about, you know, this is an area that I, you know, it's not an area that I oversee. It's been very much a year of discovery of really looking at, okay, what are we doing? Okay, what this is, okay, let's look at kind of what is research or best practice as we should be doing, but let's look at what other school districts are doing. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we could look at things that help to make the application process maybe more enjoyable. We're looking at the, like, what are the questions we're asking? The number of questions we're asking. How difficult is the process to actually just fill out an application? And so that is something that is going to be evaluated this summer by the principals and looking at the questions that we ask. And maybe what we try to do is really streamline the process, really make sure that maybe we're asking fewer questions, but we're getting the information we really want out of those questions. So it's also a good time to, we probably need to make sure that we're doing this on a, you know, on a regular basis every few years. Let's take a look at our questions. We also want to make sure that we incorporate a DI-related question within that process. Let's make sure that we add a question for that. Also, we're looking at our entire interview process and making sure that there is a level of consistency that from no matter what That from no matter what administrator or whoever is conducting an interview, that there are some, 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 some guidelines, some parameters. Are we asking the same questions for the same positions for that consistency? A big part of it has also been just looking at our internal and external communications, that is how we promote ourselves. And that is how we can attract people, but it's also how we can retain people, how we can, through our communications and making, letting even people within the district. You know, really see what we're doing from school to school and, and making the staff members that are here make them even feel more a part of being here. I know that we're doing some work with West Forty and, and, and working to promote the, the district. And I think those will be excellent resources, they'll be great recruiting tools as well, because this is also a way for us to show external candidates. What we're, what it's like to work or be a part of District Ninety-Six. And then also just a professional, looking at options or opportunities for professional development for our administration, potentially our staff, related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. On the retention side, we began focusing on really what is that first-year experience? Because we've all been first-year employees somewhere and we know like how critical that is. You know, it's, it's, how are you welcomed into the environment? What is your first-year experience? Do you, you know, we have an excellent mentoring, mentor-mentee process in place for our certified staff. And making sure that not only are they being supported, that they're, that they're getting the professional development they need, but also that we're getting feedback from them. And, and so in looking at that first-year experience, are they getting the PD mentoring, monitoring, feedback? And expanding it even beyond the certified staff of, you know, in, in each, like I, in, in my department, I've had two brand-new people that with, with really very limited tech experience. So that was, you know, PD and training is very important. And, and they've really, they've assimilated into the environment, everybody, I mean, you can just tell, that's, that's kind of that warm fuzzy of making sure that people are supported, they have what they, they need. You're, they're being checked in with and then you can continue to support them. So just looking at those, those first year and looking at our onboarding process. Again, that internal, external communication of, you know, we're, we're looking at things, we do have new staff. You know, how are we welcoming them in to the district, even within our communications, making sure that people know who they are, can put a face with a name. And, and not only from the standpoint of, you know, internal communications, but I, I think we're going to start to see some changes to our website. And, and again, more of that student-centered, a little bit more of a, a warm fuzzy to our, our, our web presence as well. One of the areas that we are going to be developing a goal, we're looking at some of the data that we're getting back from the work with the Nate Eklund, the consulting group, Vital Networks. And, and looking at that as a source for looking at overall staff satisfaction and being able to just use, since, since that is data that we're actually collecting regularly. That we can identify possibly some data points to, to see how we're making progress in that area as well. And then just establishing an, an exit interview process that when people are leaving the district voluntarily, just making sure that we're understanding why they're leaving. So that we know that, you know, we can always continually improve if for some reason it's, it's, if it's, if it was, if somebody's leaving for a reason that perhaps we would have had some level of control over, just to, to be able to know what we could possibly do better. So before I jump to the next section, I can say, do you have any questions about this?
Just a thirty-second question.
Sure.
Have we considered partnering with the certification and endorsement officers at universities either to advertise or to ask for those highly qualified teachers that have multiple endorsements? Whether it's bilingual or reading, or if you're a type-nine secondary teacher who can teach junior high science, like those might be, I'm just suggesting, it might be a neat place to advertise.
No, that would, that's a great.
Those are the people that have a lot of extra skills that we might really want in our schools because they have, they might have a technology endorsement or something. And that officer goes through each exiting teacher and has to help them figure out what their qualifications are. And if you either advertise through that office or receive tips from that person, oh, we've got a lot of people with this coming in, it might be a useful place to look.
Sure, that's the area we could definitely focus on.
What is our current process to collect data with regards to like staff satisfaction? Is this a survey where, I remember Nate Eklund and he was doing the climate and, and teacher climate and like care back in whatever, twenty-one? And there was a large-scale survey then, but since that time, like what is our routine surveying process of our educators?
So we follow, we've been doing it each year, so that was twenty-one, this is the, so this is the second year that we've been working with them or is it the third year?
So fall.
We do a beginning of the year and an end of the year and we do two mid-year, what we call pulse checks. So there's four data points that we gather from staff, the beginning of year and the end of year, and they're called beginning of year and end of year surveys. Are essentially the same, taken at different times, the pulse check is meant to be more how are you as an individual doing? It's more of a, they call it their hope and vitality scale. So we just, we actually just met with Nate today during our district leadership team to look at our district pulse check data. So we now have two years, why am I like, because the, the year is compressed on me and I, you know, is this our?
There was also, wasn't there a minor change, there were some changes in the, the survey itself?
They've changed, yes, they've changed their survey some, they've changed their platform, they've gone to an all-online system.
So our, the, the baseline data could be, I, I think that's where like from the first year, because there were some changes, so sometimes tough to establish that baseline. But kind of this year, I think would probably be our baseline data then moving forward, because.
I would consider last year our baseline data, I don't think it changed.
That much?
That much, I think we've been able to look at like last fall to this fall. And so we have a, what we anticipate will be an ongoing contract, we would move into next year with them also.
I was going to say, we have high response rates or hundred percent, like is it?
A hundred, because we do it during an institute day or a PD day, so we get, it's, I mean, if somebody's like a ways, and they're like, your response rate is really consistent. I said, yes, because we give it at a time.
By design, yeah.
Yeah, all staff are present, yeah.
Wait, that's a great idea. We've done that at work too, where if you have, if you have teams that struggle, it's like, you know what, just give up ten minutes of your meeting and say, go do this.
And that's what it is, if it's ten minutes or five minutes, it's very short, yeah. And our, the, like the R C has really appreciated it, they were really very much behind kind of the initial part of the process. And we weren't sure we should do two pulse checks because even the principal's like, I feel like we're just giving out another survey again and we just did it. And the teacher's like, no, we want to take it again, like because it's short, it's fast, it's pretty pales. So that was good feedback to get.
And then the second area focuses on the develop aspect with the personalized professional, personalized learning planning team. And here I have this one.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll get ready for the next slide.
You're leaving me? Oh, you can go, it's okay, you can go do what you need to do. So also under goal three is a strategy of the, the professional learning planning team or PLPT. And the professional learning planning team is about providing professional, it was developed to provide professional learning to help provide the professional learning that our staff members receive. It was something we developed through contract negotiations, a team that's been going since the, the conclusion of contract negotiations and started this new contract. And the original goals were to give voice to staff members to be able to help plan professional learning. However, over the course of time, there's been a shift in focus of this planning team because our professional learning is now mostly planned through our action teams. So it's strategic plan-related and our district leadership teams to meet staff needs based on input from various staff groups. Like the building leadership teams or all district leadership team and so forth. So because we have professional learning happening and being developed through a different entity, we've begun to shift the focus of the PLPT. And so now they are focused more on the personalized learning of staff members, that aspect of professional learning. And working on structures and strategies for staff members to have ownership of their personalized learning. So looking at different ways that staff members can personalize their learning, whether it's through book studies, workshops, or other entities. So that's what the PLPT is focused on now, is the personalized learning piece rather than the whole district professional learning. Because we've restructured the way we plan our professional learning so that it's more in line with what our district, our whole district goals are with the strategic plan and building focus goals based off of staff input. Any questions about PLPT? All right.
Now it's financed at goal five.
It's financed.
Goal five is stewardship of resources and as a reminder, I put it up there, develop and sustain effective, efficient, and equitable use of all resources. In order to optimize operations for improved student achievement and fiscal responsibilities. Oh, there we go, that was kind of small from here. The, kind of the sub-goals that we have under this goal five is to maintain our ISB financial recognition of four-point-oh, which when you saw the audit a couple of months ago. We did get four-point-oh in that category. We're going to be working on budgets here soon and number two there is for expenditures to not exceed CPI. And that, we're on track for that, the, the CPI was very high last year, so that shouldn't really be an issue. We'll have a tentative budget for next year to look at during the June board meeting. The facility maintenance repair improvement projects are on schedule and within budget. And, you know, at this point, some of these are really estimates and you saw Ramesh's update today on, on one of them. So that's flexible, but we're making decisions on the, the flexibility on those numbers. Our, our maintenance work order system, we're able to respond automatically within one business day. And actually close out quite a few of the work orders as they come in within a couple of days or at least reply to the person who put the work order in and let them know what, what the holdup is and what the plan is. Another financial planning one is the technology five-year plan and to keep our cost increases under CPI. And I believe that one of the next meetings, Don's going to give us a presentation on a five-year plan and we'll be sure that it's kept under CPI. And also on the, we've combined the work order system with the maintenance work order system with the technology work order system. And they're also able to respond within a business day and actually close out a lot of the work orders very quickly. So we're on track with goal five.
Jim, I, I wonder, you, you mentioned a couple of times some goals where we're going lower than CPI and as you mentioned, CPI has been pretty through the roof recently. Does it make sense or would it make sense? I know it's kind of hard to foresee with inflation being what it is, but is there, would it make sense to have a stretch goal of being lower than CPI? Up to the degree that we are comfortable doing that? Because I guess you said, it, it interested me when you said that, that it shouldn't be a trouble to get below a seven percent CPI.
Right.
Would, would it make sense to try to peg it a little lower than that than to something that?
Like pick a number instead of CPI, four percent is kind of what you're saying?
Or, or like, you know, CPI, if CPI is above this level, then we're trying for one percent below or something like that, whatever is obtainable. Or whatever is realistic without, you know, causing issues for staff or, or for students.
Right, so overall, we've been able to keep our expenditures within CPI so far and, and since I've been here, it's, you know, two percent at the most. I would try to keep going the same way or if there should be a reason, but something we're purchasing that pushes it over in one category. I think overall, we should be able to maintain closer to two percent.
Yeah, and, and that, that's fantastic and, and I guess it's, it, it's great that, I don't know that you want to commit to the, to that being the goal of saying we're going to keep expenses to two percent. Or, or maybe you would, I guess, it's just, I guess I'm wondering, rather than saying CPI, if we're feeling comfortable hitting less than CPI, would that make sense to incorporate it in the goal?
Sure, I, we, we could do that. I, I guess when we wrote this, we didn't really expect a seven percent.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
But we should expect, you know, the five percent on the revenue side. So I guess almost an obvious adjustment might be to change it to what the CPI is being applied for tax revenues.
That probably makes more sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I mean, I'd be here, but as a board member, it needs to be something that's easily understood. You know, CPI is very easy and to, I think to change it all the time becomes a little confusing, so whatever you do, keep it consistent. Yeah, I don't think you're going to have seven percent forever, but who knows, you know, we don't know.
Right.
But we have, I have never known us not to keep it to that in recent years, so I think that's doable.
Kind of an unwritten goal has been to make sure, it's always at least balanced, so we're not looking to spend more than is coming in and, and that's been attainable.
Yeah, I think it's a valid point, Dan, because if seven percent is, I mean, this is like an anomaly-type hopefully year. So I think CPI generally speaking, you know, five years ago, for the last five years per se, like that probably would just be the easy thing to do. But since it is an anomaly year, probably picking a number, because I would also say on the inverse of yours, it's not okay to spend an additional seven percent, right? Just because we can, just because it's less than CPI. So having maybe a more targeted benchmark for this, I mean, we're almost done with this year, but if it, if the inflationary stuff bleeds into next year and CPI seems like it's still going to be a little high, maybe pegging more of like a three or a four, whatever realistic number you think we can maintain in. And it's just a goal, if we need to go over by a half a percent or something like that, like.
We have a.
As long as there's a reason for it, like, you know, that's okay too, it's just a target, so I, I think it's a valid comment, Dan, I'd support that if we wanted to make a change. But to your point, I wouldn't want to keep changing it all the time either.
Yeah, I don't think it's functional if it constantly waves, that's the point of CPI is that it keeps us on, you know, something we can follow and something that follows what we're going to pay providers that give us things and what we're going to pay for materials. It's easy to, you know, as you, well, you know better than anybody why we use it, but.
There was a, a year of what, point one, since I've been doing this, not here, but, so I'm basically zero and, you know, we'll have to zero when that one comes or better.
Yeah. Well, and maybe that one, we might need a different type of adjustment on it, like whatever makes sense for what are, what we're trying to achieve that year.
Yeah, I, I think that if I came with a budget was five and a half percent, we're probably going to do a lot of talking.
Yeah.
So, I, I understand.
And I just, I'm thinking, but I don't remember when it was, but you had specifically called out things like grocery costs and gasoline costs. A lot of the things that are driving the high inflation are not directly embedded into our operations. But when you go down to zero, that might be the opposite where maybe we need two percent because whatever it is that, whatever goods and services we need might not be at zero. So, yeah, I just, yeah.
To that point, Wesley, our contracts often have, do have a escalator that is a percentage and it's sure as heck is not zero.
Yeah. And they're not going to lower it.
More than CPI, so it, I think revenue or an average of three years or something like that, that's a little bit more consistent. Because two plus two plus seven, eleven, so that's like a three percent or three and a half, whatever, not doing math in my head right now.
It's too late.
Having, having done.
We need to wrap this up.
Having done goals at work recently, I guess, my own thought is if I'm presenting something to my boss like, yeah, that's an easy one to obtain, he would come back to me and say, oh, then you have it.
Yeah, try harder, yeah.
I would get the same response.
Yeah, that's why I think that's a valid comment, Dan, we don't have to solve it tonight, but I, I mean, just kind of looking at it and saying, what is something that's realistic and maybe slightly challenging?
Maybe a floor and a ceiling, two and four.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? All right, the next report in the board book is the amendment for the current year's budget and just a couple of changes, and the grant revenue, we're adjusting it down by $76,000, and it's on both sides, revenue and the spending, because we had budgeted at a higher level that had happened the last couple of years, kind of optimistically thinking that even if the pandemic were over, that they would keep the higher levels, but it didn't happen. Number two there, we applied for another maintenance grant and got it, and so we've got $50,000 that came in for, we're putting towards the new lockers at Hauser, so both sides, revenue and expenditures will go up. And then, I want to transfer $500,000 from, basically from our savings account, the working cash, into I M R F. The money's, the property tax revenue's been coming in a little slower as, you know, they delayed the deadline on tax bills, so it'd be nice to have that cushion. It's, it's in working cash where you can't spend it, and this is the kind of reason you save it there, if one of the funds needs it, you transfer it. So, those are the big changes in why we want to amend the budget.
Transferring it, not necessarily saying that's a deficit-
None.
-that we'd expected by the end of the year to equal out essentially.
Yeah, it would be a straight transfer, like, all the, most of the time, we're transferring from, say, O and M to capital, this is just from working cash into I M R F to give us a cushion if the money isn't coming in fast enough.
So, Jim, for this, and I, you've said it, but maybe I'm not getting it, so this is just because our revenues from property taxes are a little bit slower than expected, and there is some kind of minimum threshold that we need to maintain in that account?
Yes, it's nice to have half a year maybe, and maybe a little more, we don't want four or five years worth in some accounts.
And how is that, that's paid out to future retirees, or?
It's our, it's our liability with retire, eventually it gets paid out to retirees, so we pay into the fund.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll put the notice in the paper and come back in May and have a hearing and, and ask you to approve the amendment.
So, you're going to make us work on May 17th? I thought we were supposed to just come and do all the ceremonial stuff.
I know, there's business left to-
Make us work?
No.
Nice try, Wes.
Why are you here not to do business?
It's on hand at the district office in case anyone wants to come in and see you, and that's a notice, and if it gets crowded, I can print out more copies. Thank you.
All right, Policy Committee.
I mean, I feel a little left out, I don't have a cool living-the-plan goal, but I have something better. No, believe it or not, the next press update came out, it's a lot smaller, this is Press 111 that was just issued March of 2023, so literally hot off the presses, there is a Zoom meeting that happens that really helps kind of break down what some of the bigger updates are related to and the kind of bundles, that's happening April 11, so I'll be attending that via Zoom, I believe Martha and I are both registered for that. The deadline to submit these is July 31, and again, there's not that many, it appears, just at a quick glance, about 10 that have some updates, again, not sure how sizable or significant, they might just be, you know, footers, and then three that fall under our, what we know as five-year review or review and monitoring, which is the new, the new language they use. So, likely, we'll probably have it in the May Cal, but I will chat more with Martha after the April 11 meeting, so, that's it.
All right, sounds good, that brings us back around to public comment.
There is none.
Okay, then our future meeting dates, April 19, 2023, regular business meeting 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center, board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. May 3, committee of the whole meeting, 7:00 PM in the multipurpose room at Central School. May 17, as was mentioned, public hearing, regular business meeting, biennial organizational meeting, 7:00 PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center, board will enter into closed session at 6:15 PM if necessary and return to open session at 7:00 PM. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.